Councilwoman Erica Segalstein
Here
Councilwoman Wester
Here
Councilwoman Jargis
Here
Councilwoman Groban
Here
Councilwoman Keenan Councilwoman Sterium Councilwoman Goldbaum Councilwoman Madison
Here
President Perotan Here
Sixth President This is the regularity of the city council as incorporated in the annual meeting Notice of 2012 which was filed in the City Council's office hands Posted on the bulletin board of December 27, 2012 And sent to the store ledger A whole new treaty that applies with the provision of the public public being law of New Jersey At this time we have prayer for the lead Way they like asking
Oh my God, it's been a long sleep for our community May storm citizens justice and fair play for me and all we do Above all, may the CPA go home well Give us the strength to follow it for what was upon you considerations
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America And to be followed for Bush's past One nation, not divided, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all
At this time we have public speaking Remember we have finances for person Anyone from the public In taxpayer General public address City Council in matter Please come forth into name and address at this time
Robert Trump from the city who thinks Politician that Has consequences He says we should get a door What kind of door? A pit bull or a bitch? Or a bitch we should get a cat and then going out? Or you can get a parrot and say I'm on the back of it?
Thank you Anyone else like the rest of the council in matter? And the taxpayer? Like speak? Please state your name and address For record please
Sammy Muhammad, President of the Congress, President of the Treasury You told that The CIS corporation is gonna be here We don't see him Here's your watch on YouTube Show up eighteen, here's the message for you CIS
This is my Can I tell you something? I'm the lady in Aspen That I have apologized for them I'm the lady in Aspen She called ladies here to recline weather She did not make it I know that she thought that no one will be here Who number six councilman will be there also? But she did call and she apologized That she did make it because of how I got so much They might have Okay?
I'm not even gonna I'm not even gonna watch it anymore Oh Talk about the false promises Sad stories that CIS has to tell Number one, why is the decree of building 400 still sitting here? After all those months? In that decree is black mold, asbestos, jammy oaches and mice, human feces And all other kinds of odd toys The new maintenance group is working doing the best they can do However, we can't put a bandaid on cancer As long as the children are breathing black mold and asbestos Ceiling is swollen in CIS can't tell us nothing CIS If you find maintenance and security By finding what I am saying You are only proving that you are a racist, slumlord corporation I believe you be We demand that you get new elevators, not one While you're on the buildings You have no money You don't have no air for the children to flatten? You say you have no money? CIS, you think black people are fools? And the degree that you are supposedly on the local plaza You haven't spent it down Until you tie up this new maintenance and security firm You had six builders That hold 360 apartments Each builder was 60 apartments Six times sixty is fifty Let's say the minimum rate is 725 dollars But we know some apartments take as much as 1300 But we're gonna keep it right at 725 725 times 360 is 261,000 dollars per month Times 12, you 3,132,000 dollars I mean, 3,132,000 dollars per year Times three years Is 9,000,000 dollars, 396,000 In those three years I know you didn't spend 500,000 dollars on a maintenance But let's say they did It brings it down to 8,896,000 Which is still close to 9 million In those three years before the new maintenance They did absolutely nothing The world was filled Absolutely nothing was done So CIS Is continuously talking about they have no money They can't Their budget can't be this, can't be that CIS The people have suffered for years At Opo Plaza No heat No hot water No cold water We think, we thought we suffered on our Heard him saying they been suffering like whatever they They don't know from day to day when they gonna have heat Let's just see What happened? Also, water is contaminated Council, you have been helping us great And we, that's why we're coming to you Cause y'all council members are totally concerned About the residents of Opo Plaza We thank you But we need these vouchers converted We need them converted so the people can move on and forget about the nightmare They have been living it Thank you
Anyone else like the rest of the council? I need that Please step forward, state your name and address for record please
Regina Gates, former resident of 400, Everton Avenue, covering the 220 Park Road This is for CIS The city council, the mayor, and whoever else at the state and city level And racial bias and Elizabeth Racial discrimination exists heavily in this town Heavily If the Jews were still living in Opo Plaza Going back 25, maybe 60 years ago All the necessary steps would have been taken to resolve all unsafe Unhappable conditions of people You talking about the growth and development of black men Women and children who resides in Opo Plaza Okay? On the EBA list David Backfield, which is not there On environmental Environmental AGC Department, with the state 2009 They think that the mold The mold has happened today Which is most of all is called petroleum And all sorts of chemical, toxic chemicals That we residents of Opo are enduring currently right now Just since in 2012 They just wanna put in a new mold system 2009, they knew the situation would occur They knew we are being racially discriminated against because of our mold And it's not right Something needs to be done We've been coming here and I'm pretty sure at the city level And at the state level Everybody knows the mold Everybody needs to take part in And you are just a human beings We are human beings And people got seen after the role in development of our young black men, women, and children Because the thing that affect us is breathing these toxic chemicals And what CIS is doing off and not the health department What about the health department? Get somebody to respect that court To speak in his land and wood We breathing this stuff and no one is taking the necessary precautions No one is Covering up your own And not stop I was thinking of the problems She's gonna, she's gonna find a place to study anyway She's gonna, she was putting this down for the government to protect this type of stuff So why people say Why people say Look at that, let it burn over Let the people who all the property, why she not know, let her eat it Those who want to come back to state and want to live out Don't have us to live through that, 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 that nonsense That nobody had a house for the house to live there with is doing nothing right And no one is saying she's not any of them No payments No type of information We going to fight through this process and put it into Opo Plaza Under the Fair Housing Act And that's why I was supposed to go to the bank While I was supposed to be on Opo Plaza It's not right And it's, no one is saying anything No, that is the thing that I'm not loving What you do is make your people do I don't understand what people respond Do we not have to be excellent? CIS is not doing anything They don't even answer my question And we've been coming to answer the last couple of weeks With questions, addresses, the dates of the building And everything else I'm still thinking a little bit changes to that So, I mean, this is about the folks and the moment of people We don't know what to expect from states who have been breathing that bad That have been able to water that mold That cause all types of mental problems With the children And the problems of the children Keep going to concentrate why they do Because of the issues that they're breathing in Something gotta be done That's, that's all I can say Something has to be done Because the Jews people say They took all the necessary steps that they don't want to be around This is, this is not to be despite People saying and above all, they're not having anything It's fine with that And it's not right It's not right It's wrong It's possible
And anyone else? Assistant Councilman in matter?
Good evening My name is LaShawn I'm in the county of New York And I'm president of the Department of Public Safety
Say first name again
LaShawn Okay, the thing that I have Is the mold in my apartment It's in Opo Plaza I also have some mold
Skin mold
Mold Black mold It is in my ceiling It is in my bathroom I have two children Right now this sunny has had some real bad So I have to constantly take them to the doctor Then they check out, it doesn't hold I'm gonna go to the mold I go to the outpatient doctor Everything they shot is in the mold It's bad And my thing is, I don't understand how people go home and have conscience Like, nobody has a heart Nobody cares about how they're gonna live And it's wrong Like, it's just like everybody said It's starting to be a risk thing Like, just because we live in this Because of what's going on over here And if you're still not supposed to be treated very, very treated It's not fair We try not to live like that And, like I said It's wrong The people need to do something about it CIS needs to do something Everyone's aware how they're living Nobody's concerned about how they're living Everybody go home, get a nice house Get a nice apartment Oh, they live it They just think about how they're living But one thing is But eventually they have their money They don't have their money here You don't see nobody on the property As soon as they don't have our rent money, you wanna put this out You see all CIS there They push about your apartment So why come they can't come around when you need a little help? Like, everybody had to come out there and do something Cover up the houses Let us go So we go through it basically Defense, safety And go live Don't have to breathe in mold or a hot water No heat Everything I mean, it's wrong They need to do something about the mold that's created this Like, they have to tell me, they have to breathe in the mold every day It's wrong Something needs to be done Like, how can you go to sleep and just say, I don't think about what's going on over here? Nobody has a heart I mean, how can you just live like that? Don't have a heart Care about the other people Care about your citizens People are hard on something It's wrong Something needs to be done
The time before you leave Did you say you don't have any heat now, you said?
The heat can go in somewhere Have heat one day The next day, you don't have heat It's the first thing that you want This is why he is a natural Or whatever It comes and goes So I have to run my soul I have to run his head And that could keep my apartment going It's not right And everybody's It's not hot And you supposed to go to the other place when you have heat Thank you
Thank you, thank you You said, what's your number?
5K
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 Good afternoon Morning, morning 30, 40, 50, 20, 20 I just wanna say that the decree is still out there It's still in healing It is all we have But I, my only unit When I look outside of them There's cows up there at my roof Okay? And also, listen, Sam, from back then When he was doing figures And he was bringing out rent and everything Because he does not live there It was the money was a little war Because I have went to my tax papers They all gave him 5 million dollars a month From Opo Plaza So three years, that's 15 million dollars Okay? I don't even calculate the add up Cause I used to be a max And the rent If I, if there wasn't another club, other subsidized I would be paying 1,700 dollars rent That's in the market rent for my apartment I had to spend So you're saying for me to live If I was paying 1,700 dollars rent to look outside To see a family dirty at my roof Dirty, filthy hallways God is all on the hallway Holes in the walls They were used Same ball down The second day I moved in the apartment My sink was fell on the floor I got locked in the apartment Close to the door Staying in the apartment Had to knock in my door To get me out of there Because I was getting sick And people still tapping the floor down And like I said, I would be paying 1,700 dollars rent And you know what they thought I was doing? Cause I would be there if I back down and living the way I had So they look at how subsidized And I do Have to pay as much for regards I paid I just think what I knew I had And, you know, they give me every month That shit is out of there You know, so I mean, you know, it just looks like nothing is being done You know, it's like the You know, same old song we sing You know, it's the same song we gonna be doing, you know? So I'm just gonna, whether they gonna move their dirt They kicking it every day, but They have to move And it needs to be moved out Because the kids, really They got it all messed around But the kids can't really play out there now Because the dirt They have it messed around So let's take it all For where the kids can play And the way somebody got me to park our cars You know, because all the parking lot is old That's all I have to say
Okay, thank you Anyone else that like to do us Aggressive council in matter? Please state your name And press record please
Good evening
Good evening
My name is Angie Moss I reside in 200 Park Road, Elizabeth, New Jersey Again, we're here in face of council To speak about Opo Plaza And I'm sure we're tired of hearing this This is a great title, Opo Plaza And I mean to you I was there Councilman Madison, you would state that we needed a lawyer And wanted to help us In our fight or our quest for Opo Plaza But you may also state that we need other voices Here are the voices You are the voices There was only one black resident To Governor Francis Christie Which was by Carlos and Danny was in our border That is also a little voice In a bucket of, in a large bucket of water We're asking for help We're asking for assistance There is so much that's going on in Opo Plaza That purely has not been stated here beside the just the mold There is a lot that CIS needs to be said in their face Which I would not say Cause there's questions that I have with them That you cannot answer We were here for this And I was also for my daughters and family that they would be here But due to the weather They said that they would not come Due to this pleasure I won't here I don't feel well But I'm here Being in front of the council And here CIS And my fellow tenants My old residents Also, CIS has stated that they will be moving people out of their residence Due to this redevelopment And that people will be out by the end of October Of course Her case in has come about without a little judgment But nonetheless We do have residents that are resigned and is ready to move to Avenue Not that many residents Some of them don't even live in their apartments for fear Of going in their apartments To go into the building There is a police mobile unit that sits there Taking up space Taking up taxpayers Taking some of the time Because of the way that my body is I hardly sleep at night So I do a lot of walking I do a lot of surfing I do a lot of looking out of my window Have I seen any police patrolling? No Have I seen any police coming inside the buildings? No But yet, I've heard police out of their mass state Opo Plaza is a high crime area Such a high crime area Where they, why they afraid to walk into our community? To even know some of the children, some of the women? There is a lot that goes on in Opo Plaza But this is a positive thing that I want to drop down in your ears There is a young woman Who was moved into an apartment She is not a wife She is working She has a job She's supporting her own children And she says to me, Miss Paulus It feels good going to my home My home The money that she is getting is not gonna be allowed to pay For like 1,700 dollars with a child And she burst that on a stomach child? I don't think so She's gonna try to, I'm here to pay all Who's going to be neglected? Of course, a child We said we do not want to neglect our children But what is a single woman to do? I talked with the mayor The city of Elizabeth needs low housing Low income housing We need the subsidy We need to get some of our women Who are working on our welfare To be on our, to stand up And in an apartment that is low income now Is what they need That is what I'm here for Also, I'm also here for the state with the children During the summer There was a construction being done in the 350 There is a large, huge hole here It is not sanctioned It is not roped up It is not messed up It is open Anybody, any child who go there Fall and hurt themselves Children are children Come on, let's be real Children are little clay And it's mostly not that far from where the little clay rock area is located That is what I'm saying They have the area 400 building fenced off But this is not fenced off When I questioned CIS about the dig I'm sorry, I said as Opo Plaza forces About digging back there And also the fire department They were unaware about what was going on They had no idea They said, Opo, we're gonna send somebody to find out They never called me back and let me know The fire department was there To my understanding There's a hole that happened and well, you get your spillage there contamination If there's contamination on the grounds Our children are affected by it Kids playing in grass Some kids eating dirt Some kids eating grass It's a learning experience as kids do Council, we're looking at you We come here every Tuesday Mom, have your mom let you come? And the CIS is dragging their feet For whatever reason Which I'm not saying is they are not here And I need to ask you questions You council need to step up and help the city The residents The tenants Of Elizabeth
We have a question Three more minutes Anyone that want to come up? I will allow you to finish We have our three more minutes before we call the published section By the both being Excuse me, five minutes I'm gonna be dead I will allow you to switch your heads Come on This will be less than allowed To most of you to go to bed You have an hour But I will let it finish Thank you Come on, come on Close the
So my question is, I was wanting to come to the state and 220 Park Road And I just need to know The dates, you know, what everybody said That they are coming They are There's a lot of proportions going on Cause it was already outdated And, you know, let us know the dates This is for CIS Let us know the dates So we can further prepare ourselves If we have to get extra money to move Or anything like that Cause I'm pretty sure that when they do decide Because it's not gonna be They're not gonna help us move So, we need to know these dates and these times So we can further prepare ourselves and our families on moving So, you know, when everything comes Because I was expecting the company But then I knew it's what You know, it's really useless But the question that I had is my Thank you
Okay, thank you Let's close the, talk this session
No, come on, come on Come on, come on
You ready?
Yeah. Go over here.
I have an hour here.
How are you?
Right?
Uh, I have 200 Park Row.
Come on, listen to me. Come on, listen to me.
I have 200 Park Row.
Listen to myself.
I'm here today.
Say, can you say your name?
I need some rain next. I live at 200 Park Row, apartment 4C. I have three children. One of my kids, which is disabled, we have to come to 44, every day, he has less time, he was, don't nobody call me from C S I and say, oh, the hell with this, they're going to Elizabeth, they don't do shit. I'm tired, I'm tired of it. Right now, you see everybody from C S I, we all Black people that's sitting here, that's the plan. You don't see one Spanish person sitting here, and that's wrong, how do I sit here and play and let them suffer like that? I have three children, I work, I work hard, I work in a school, I've been working in a school for 10 years. And I pay my rent, everyone pays for me. Only thing I want is justice, justice, it's beautiful, actually, and that everybody know their own way. That's it. I'm willing to have it.
Uh, closing the public session, uh, just to be, just to be, I'm, just, just up there, I'm going to ask the Supreme Court to send a letter from, uh, from this body, uh, to C I S, to make sure they give us an update on the whole condition of that, uh, complex. The other thing is, I heard you talk about community room. Uh, I don't know what's, I don't, when you first started, you know, there, they said, can you use your original living room for a more, I don't know if they tried to, uh, get rid of that situation, I, I, I don't know, but I would ask the court to send a letter to the C I S, to give us a complete update of what's with the community room. I want to report on the move, the soil that's outside that, that come back up there. Uh, also, I want a report, uh, on the whole legs been in there for some time. Uh, and also, I want an update on the, you know, heat situation there. These are things that we want to request from C I S, and hope that they get the answer by the time we leave again. And I'm just, I have, I have, I see, I have a week, I close the portion, but I want to get that information to all of us, and certainly to you guys, and, uh, and we're also requesting C I S to be able to exit again, and hopefully that we don't get any violent weather, that any, that are not here. Uh, and unfortunately, uh, that's what she told, and she, uh, gave us information that she would not be here because of the weather, uh, and we can't control the weather. So, certainly, uh, we have been crying, we're very concerned, and we are all here, uh, City Councilor concerned, just as well as you are. You guys just don't know how much we wish that we could just turn this thing around, uh, today, tonight. If we hadn't been powered, uh, in our possession, we would do that, because we feel the pain. And there's no way that no one, no one should have to suffer for Black heat, uh, like dirt piles and, and, and it around and out of there, and whole thing, like our community room, not, uh, completely, uh, resolved. Those things, we got to make sure that you, uh, have a pleasure, and we won't rest until they get, uh, completely sprayed now. Thank you, and we will continue fighting. Mr. President, this time, this president, right here.
I'm sorry, sir. One thing that you left out, if you can add up to that letter, status, I want to have an elevator for you.
The elevator?
Elevators.
Yes. Okay, we'll have that, thank you, Mr. President.
Eleven.
Okay. And we can close, we close that over here, we just, we just close that over here.
Ordinance number 4344, authorize capital ordinance in the amount of $300,000 for the acquisition of batteries, vehicles, and equipment for the recreation department.
Here, order number 4344, anyone come like this, order number 4344. See another motion.
Ordinance number 4345, authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Daniel C. Corrancy, 655, Oldwood Terrace.
You have to read the order number 4345, anyone come like this, order number 4345. Once again, anyone like this, order number 4345, on the public, see another.
Ordinance number 4346, authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Josephina Muscatol, 409 South Fifth Street.
You have to read the order number 4346, anyone come like this, order number 4346. Once again, anyone come like this, order number 4346, see another.
Ordinance number 4347, authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for George Martinez, 10 South Fifth Street.
You have to read the order number 4347, anyone come like this, order number 4347. Once again, you have to read the order number 4347, anyone like this, order number 4347. See another, please. Petition, petition, please, consider my colleague, uh, just ask for the number of petition and the mutation. Many points of City Office, a new law, we can go to our first meeting.
Ordinance number 4348, amend ordinance number 4010 specifically to reflect salary adjustments and state health benefits, like for sharing of prenup payments for our City Council members, the mayor, the department director.
You have to read the order number 4348, would you please, move the orders for both, move that second. Any comments?
Mr. President.
I'm sorry, President, pass it.
I happen to review the, uh, recommendation that was sent to the rest of City Council from the, uh, Salary Committee, and, uh, I now look to the state, the condition of the state, of, uh, the economy, and anything else, I do not feel comfortable to support this particular ordinance, so I want you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. One last thing, yes. Roco.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazzan.
Aye.
President, yeah. President Protenko.
Aye. Point best, at five, by six.
Ordinance number 4349, authorize the execution of a lease agreement between the city of Elizabeth and U.S. Representative Albius Sires for the use of walk-in space at the Stevens Sampson Senior Center and the street for a period of two years at no rental fee.
You have to read the order number 4349, would you please, move the orders for both, move that second, any comments? Roco.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazzan.
Aye.
President Protenko.
Aye, six eyes, one best.
Ordinance number 4350, grant community courtship permits to Southside Consulting, Inc., Robbinsville, New Jersey, to install two groundwater monitoring wells along the public right-of-way within the side or adjacent to 1089, 1099 Elizabeth Avenue.
You have to read the order number 4350, would you please, move the orders for both, move that second. Any comments? Now, see another, Roco.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazzan.
Aye.
President Protenko.
Aye, six eyes, one best. Public hearing for consideration of the full point, what is shown, take place in the City Council to be held Tuesday, December 11, 2012, at 7:30 PM, ordinance or not necessary.
Ordinance number 4344, authorize capital ordinance in the amount of $300,000 for the acquisition of batteries, vehicles, and equipment for the recreation department.
You have to read the order number 4345, would you please, move the orders for both, move that second, any comments? See another, Roco.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazzan.
Aye.
President Protenko.
Aye, six eyes, one best.
Ordinance number 4345, authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Daniel C. Corrancy, 655, Oldwood Terrace.
You have to read the order number 4345, would you please, move the orders for both, move that second, any comments? Roco.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazzan.
Aye.
President Protenko.
Aye. Six eyes, one best.
Ordinance number 4346, authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Josephina Muscatol, 409, South Fifth Street.
You have to read the order number 4346, would you please, move the orders for both, move that second, any comments? Roco.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazzan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Protenko.
Aye, six eyes, one best.
Ordinance number 4347, authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for George Martinez, 10 South Fifth Street.
You have to read the order number 4347, would you please, move the orders for both, move that second, any comments? Roco.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazzan.
Aye.
President Protenko.
Six eyes, aye, I'm sorry, aye, six eyes. On this, on this.
You will listen.
Authorize amendment to the fiscal year 2013 budget to insert as an item revenue according to the New York, New Jersey Department of Homeland Security Home Concentrate Grant in the amount of $297,000.
You have to read that resolution, would you please, move the resolution for both, move that second, any comments? See another, Roco.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazzan.
Aye.
President Protenko.
Aye, six eyes, resolution best.
Authorize amendment to the fiscal year 2013 budget to insert as an item revenue according to the New York, New Jersey Department of Homeland Security Home Delivery Unit Grant in the amount of $1,725,000. Authorize amendment to the fiscal year 2013 budget to insert as an item revenue according to the New York, New Jersey Department of Homeland Security Home Response Unit Grant in the amount of $179,000. Authorize amendment to the fiscal year 2013 budget to insert as an item revenue according to the New York, New Jersey Department of Homeland Security Response Grant in the amount of $241,228. Authorize amendment to the fiscal year 2013 budget to insert as an item revenue a kids' recreation trust fund 2012 grant in the amount of $150,000 with a local share of $150,000. Authorize amendment to the fiscal year 2013 budget to insert as an item revenue in New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, recycler 2000 grant 2010 in the amount of $72,787.79. Authorize amendment to the fiscal year 2013 budget to insert as an item revenue in New Jersey Division of Criminal Justice Body Armor 2012 grant in the amount of $27,645.38. Authorize amendment to the fiscal year 2013 budget to insert as an item revenue in New Jersey Department of Public Safety Edward Burner Order Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $75,440.
You have to read that resolution, would you please, move the resolution for both, move that second, any comments? See another, Roco.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazzan.
Aye.
President Protenko.
Aye, six eyes, one resolution best.
Authorize park city officials to submit a request to the Director Division of Global Finance to make corrections in the city's 2013 fiscal year municipal budget to account for change of title or text of appropriation approved subsequently to the adopted budget. Authorize the adoption of a res- of a resolution that would pre-qualify prospective flexible spending account providers to serve the city to the following. A D P, Melvin, New York, Flexible Benefit, Virginia Beach, Virginia, Eflex Group, Madison, Wisconsin, Sterling, Oldwood, California. Benefit Strategies, Manchester, New Jersey, Infinisource, Coldwater, Michigan, Amerenell, Porsha, Pennsylvania. Permit the Elizabeth Avenue partnership to adopt an across-the-street banner lease agreement along the Elizabeth Avenue between Bridge Street and Fourth Street at a fee of $250 per week, or priced at the discretion of the Elizabeth Avenue partnership. Authorize the award of a contract to a check group of insurance companies on Park of Jersey through the agent of record, Otterstad Agency, for a policy of insurance covering city-owned properties for the period of October 1, 2012, to October 1, 2013, at an annual premium of $111,159.69. Authorize the award of a contract to Star Ledger, Northern Jersey, for publishing of legal notices for a period of two years from the award of the contract in the amount of $160,000. Amend the resolution adopted in October 23, 2012. Authorize the proposed home loan to mortgage itself by the city for association 64 on the property located at 1464, 1465 Lexington Place, specifically to correct the amount of the new loan from Saha Bank from $1,400,000 to $1,475,000.
You have to read that resolution, would you please, move the resolution for both, move that second, any comments?
Yes, President, pass it.
Okay. Uh, President, we see the Elizabeth Avenue partnership. Uh, we have requested some more information on this banner contract.
Yes.
Seems that there are letters being, and they're going to further discuss this at the board meeting in January, so I'll lay the tables of that at this point in time.
Second. You have a motion, second, you should take it. Have a motion, put on table, by Councilwoman Rover.
Second.
Second, by Councilwoman Mazzan. Roco, on table.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazzan.
Aye.
President Protenko.
Aye, six eyes, and resolution's table. Now have motion on the fourth to, uh, ask for a resolution. And you second, I ask for second, second.
See that, bring that, Roco, bring it, Roco. Roco.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazzan.
Aye.
President Protenko.
Aye, six eyes, resolution best.
Amend the resolution adopted November 10, 2009, authorizing an agreement between the city and Josephine's place to provide life skills training for low to moderate income women, as well as the agreement dated July 7, 2010, specifically to reflect an extension to June 30, 2013. Amend the resolution adopted June 28, 2011, authorizing an agreement between the city and Josephine's place to provide life skills training for low to moderate income women, as well as the agreement dated December 28, 2011, specifically to reflect an extension to June 30, 2013. Authorize office city officials to execute all necessary documents to provide a deferred payment loan owner occupied basic program on the property located at 461475 Captain Street Unit 106B in an amount not to exceed $10,587. Authorize, excuse me, authorize reward of contract to M R Services. North Partsway, New Jersey, provides civil engineering services in connection with the hurricane sandy damage assessment of veterans in water waterfront park, arena, recreation pier, and hybrid bike and road throughway at a cost not to exceed $120,000. Establish handicap parking spaces in front of the premises located at 454 Fulton Street, 436 Nile Street, and 313 High Street, pay utility bills, several bingo and rental licenses.
You have to read that resolution, would you please, move the resolution for both, move that second, any comments? See another, Roco.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazzan.
Aye.
President Protenko.
Aye, six eyes, resolution best.
Comments? Just for high school, white man, and male combinations. Are they going to come out?
Uh, Mr. President, I, uh, today I spoke to a manager, and he would love to bring, uh, the, uh, marching bands of members, uh, but will not be doing a regular council meeting, because whenever we have a regular council meeting, he has a job to perform in Pennsylvania. He would love to come in during the pre-council meeting, unless, you know, give a specific time, or specific date. So, at least we know that if he would like to come, he'll be doing pre-council meeting, and make sure that...
You can look out, you know, with our secret.
I, you know, on any Tuesday in December, not the first Tuesday, but at least, you know, whatever, the first pre-council meeting comes in.
Okay, so you want first Tuesday?
Let him know, or the second, pre-council meeting will be okay, so he'll give sufficient time for random provisions, or whatever. Whatever you want, let me know, and I'll let him know, so. Check for the president.
I'll call you. Call you, call.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments? Okay, one more, Catherine Centelea, Valerie Ruth Hunter, Joseph Waskaz Haski, Maria Ungar, and Tina Ross. Any other more? They all stand for the more, please.